Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, we're on now. Good morning. Well, it's my pleasure to introduce Robin Denson. I had met Robin about two months ago at a, over at South El Baptist for fundraising. I'm not a fundraiser, for information on safe parking networks, which we're going to be doing here. So, anyway, I am glad she was able to come this morning and give us a vote. She's running for county council, and I think it's an important thing. We need to have someone in there that's going to put her on the side of the bridge. So, anyway, Robin.
Thank you, Denny. Thank you, Denny, for inviting me, and George, for setting this up. I hardly know where to begin, because there's so much we can talk about today. As Denny said, I'm running for county council, so I'm going to give the disclaimer that I'm here wearing that hat, although because it frees me up to talk about pretty much anything. The rules are just crazy, and I really try to stick to them. But I'm also a Gig Harbor City Councilperson, so I can talk about all of that. And I'll talk a little bit about my background and what I've been involved with in the community, because I think there's a lot that you might have questions about there as well. And I'd love to just kind of have this as a town hall type of open discussion. So, I really want to hear from you, not only your questions, but your ideas and thoughts. And I'll just start off by saying how much I admire your church. I live right down the street, right at the bottom of Huron-Hurson. So, you know, I'm past this church all the time, and I see the folks that are out there waving signs, and just the social justice you all are involved with, and the safe parking interest that you have. It's obviously a place full of wonderful, good-hearted people. So, I feel right at home here, and thank you so much. I was just here the other day for Together Women Rise with Phil, so it was really, really amazing. Something I hadn't heard about. I don't know how I missed that. A wonderful best secret. So, again, like Denny said, I'm Robin Denson, current city councilperson and candidate for county council. I always like to start off by saying that I'm a mom of two kids. They're teenagers. One of them had a sleepover last night, except I sound a little froggy. At one point, I woke up, it's like 11:30, and it was quiet. I'm like, are they even in their house? I had fallen asleep upstairs, because I couldn't find them anywhere. So, they're probably outside of you now. Hopefully, they're outside and not on their phones. So, I've been a single mom for a long time, so I can kind of relate to some of the struggles of some of the folks that we see, although we see all sorts of folks that are struggling right now with the economy and coming out of COVID and all of those things. Prior to City Council, my career path was really varied. I spent about 20 years doing nonprofit management, and everything from economic developments and starting off with the mainstream programs of small business to moving into health and human service programs. And we had everything from homeless shelters to Section 8, to WIT, to Head Start, then kind of moving up in continuum as people were starting to gain self-sufficiency. We had financial literacy programs, banking programs, asset accumulation programs, homeownership, small business development, all of that, lots of job training. And I was the grant writer, so I got to get to know a little bit about all of these areas. And I'm passionate about all of the ways that we can come together as a community to help people achieve self-sufficiency, to the extent that it's possible, and help them along their path, because I really believe that, you know, we all do better when we all do better. And we can think of the community and not just ourselves. It really benefits everybody. So, I did that. I worked for Habitat for a number of years as well. And then I worked for the State House of Representatives Housing Committee, because I've had so much experience with housing. I was recruited into that position and helped legislators on both sides of the aisle. It was a nonpartisan position, so it was really fantastic, drafting legislation, analyzing legislation, and thinking fiscal impacts, and giving them options when they said, now I want a homeless bill. So, 2005, I think, 2004, 2005, we wrote the Homeless Act, the original one, that started providing funding to the counties. And so, doing the research about what was being done in other areas. Now, this is an issue that's been around for a long time, and we're still dealing with today, that I've been involved with, with that, with that one, at the legislative level. And then, on the other end of the spectrum, helping to incentivize and provide more affordable housing, which, again, is still a problem, and even more a problem today. So, things like providing tax incentives for developers, and those have gone through different iterations. And then, making sure that our landlord-tenant laws are the way they need to be. So, you know, we need our landlords to be doing well and to be whole, because we need them to provide the rental housing that we need. But on the other hand, we need to make sure that the tenants have protections, so that their rents aren't increased to the point where they're having to move out and then look finding something they can afford, and making sure that they were getting the correct information about, you know, land, for example, or mold. So, really enjoy delving into those issues and love the nonpartisanship part of that. I mean, right now, it's just gotten so partisan that we're not listening to each other, and I think both sides are equally to blame for this. And I think one of the things that I bring to city council, and hopefully to county council as well, is my experience working. Like, when I worked in legislature, you weren't allowed to express at all what you were. I couldn't even have a yard sign for anybody, because you've had to just be that impartial and make sure both sides trusted that you were going to work for the best policy. And that's, you know, how I've approached city council as well. We all know what each other are in terms of parties, but when you really think about these issues that are facing our communities today, they should not be partisan. We all want the same things in terms of safe neighborhoods that we can walk or send our kids out in. We all want a healthy environment. Now, some of us maybe have more of a passion for that than others, but we all, I think, understand that the air we breathe and the water we drink, I mean, we all need that, and we all need, you know, healthy soils for our food. This is affecting all of us. Traffic is not a partisan problem. Parking is not a partisan issue. So, I think when we can break it down and really listen to each other, we can make sure that we are taking into account all of the perspectives, and we're coming up with the best policy that people can really buy into. Because if you're jamming it down somebody's throat because you can't, because you have the majority, you have the power, then there's a whole group of people that are defensive and feel left out and are pushing back and are not joining in and being part of that solution. So, I always like to talk about the nonpartisan part of it. Unfortunately, county council is partisan, so we get into a little bit of that push and pull with that, which is unfortunate. And one of the things that the current county council has been doing, and Derek Young, in particular, who's the person I'm working to replace, because he's turning out, and he asked me to run. I always like to say I'm not, not running against Derek. One of the things he's been really good at is, so the Democrats have tutoring for the first time in like 17 years, but they've been really careful to make sure that one of the three Republicans has a leadership role, has two leadership roles, actually. So, they're really trying to make an effort to make sure that everybody feels included. So, I guess that's a little bit about my background. Volunteer-wise, I love being involved. I really have a heart for service. That's what gets me up in the morning. I'm not super money-focused. I haven't ever been. I love knowing that I've made a difference and leaving a legacy. So, some of the things you might be involved with is communities and schools. I'm on their board, and we're looking for volunteers, because we really know that the data shows that children need a trusted adult. So, it's not just tutoring. If you're not good at math, that's okay. A lot of these kids just need somebody to talk to. And as you're talking to them, we learn a lot about them and their families, and then we can go in and help their families with all sorts of things, like housing and bedding and food and clothes and a lot of social, emotional support that I think all kids are needing right now. Another thing that I'm really passionate about is the environment and land conservation. So, hopefully, we can talk a little bit about that. I just launched the Gig Harbor Land Conservation Fund, and we're working on conserving 40 acres in downtown Gig Harbor. But the fund actually covers the entire Gig Harbor and Key Peninsula area. So, we're always looking out for really good land, critical habitat, especially if it has a Seaman Street in it, but really any kind of critical habitat, or against land close to somebody's denser neighborhoods, to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to be able to walk to nature and have that respite and have that shade or have fun within the trees. We live in such an amazing area that we don't want to lose that aesthetically, but environmentally, it's so important as well. So, just a couple of things that we've been working on in the city council, and then I might open it up to questions, because I can continue to talk about county and all of that. Some of the things I thought you guys might be interested in from city council is, we've made a lot of progress on our parks. I was on the Parks Commission for four terms before I joined city council, so it's a passion area of mine. You've probably heard that we opened the Community Padler Dock, which took forever. So, this is open to everybody. If you want to bring your paddleboard, your kayak, or you've got friends visiting, it's a safer dock, because it's low profile for getting into the water, and that's at Anne Stinch Park. And we're going to be building the commercial fishing home for here there as well, which is just going to be really cool, because when I first came to Gig Harbor and drove downhill, I was from New Haven, and I saw the fishing boats out there. It was like, this is where I want to live. And it's so important that we keep our commercial fishing industry going. So, we're excited to partner with them on that. Trails, like the Cushman Trail sidewalks, we finally got Peacock Hill sidewalks on our list. It was so funny, the last study session, it's not officially on, but I've been asking this for three years, like, what list does it need to go on? Because it's always about some list. So, we're working on connectivity, so people can walk and bike, all sorts of pedestrian crossings, especially the light ones. We're working on that a lot. Do you know anything about the history of Gig Harbor? We were the site of the second-largest Malak village in their whole nation. I knew we had a presence. I didn't know it was that important. So, the 40 acres I talked about conserving downtown at Donkey Creek, which sounds cold, North Creek, that was their original village site, Talke. So, we've done a lot with them lately, within the last year, renaming the whole estuary to Talke Estuary, and we will be named Swiftwater School after the school about people. That's the English translation. And we're recognizing Indigenous People Day and Native American History Month. It just, it almost just got silly, but the extent to which we were collaborating with them, it's just that we had so much to cap up on, because people had no idea that we had this history. I would really want to celebrate our whole history. So, traffic, if you guys want to talk about traffic, I'm happy to talk about traffic. Well, I'm not really happy to talk about traffic, but I can. The roundabout is opening, and I keep hearing that, and then I keep trying to go through, and it's not, but hopefully this week. And then, affordable housing. We know that affordable housing is an issue in the Gig Harbor area, so we've joined Affordable Housing Coalition, and we're going to be looking at ways that we can add affordable housing in Gig Harbor. Because, you know, the people that work in our restaurants or work in our shops can't afford to live here, and our public transit is not good. So, we've got people trying to come from Tacoma, trying to come from Breverton, and it's pretty much impossible if you own a car. So, all of these issues are intertwined. So, I guess, you know, maybe I'll open it up to questions, and then if I don't get any, I can talk about more county stuff.
Yes. I'd love to hear what you have to say about the sports complex.
Okay, so the question for people online, if it's anybody, is what I have to say about the sports complex. So, a very contentious issue in town right now, which was surprising to the council, because for years and years and years, all we ever heard was support for the sports complex. I was on the Parks Commission, oh gosh, through all of this, and actually were the recommendation to council for moving forward with the sports complex. Now, these issues, or these projects, I should say, people have a vision that they change a lot over time. And there's three phases to the sports complex. Phase one, two, and three. Two, just so you know, is the little lake fields. So, it's already a field. It's just a matter of reorienting and creating a better layout, so that we can accommodate more kids. And if you're over there, it's just crazy, crazy busy. So, right now, the sports complex, we've just approved a contract, maybe about a month ago, for them to start doing some studies and some preliminary design, which seems crazy, because I thought we had to design, you know, four or five years ago. So, they're going to do a traffic study, they're going to do an environmental study. I know there's folks in town that feel like it's not going far enough, and we're going to be having those discussions at study session this Thursday, I think. So, you're all welcome to, it's on Zoom, because COVID seems to be coming back. And our study sessions, actually, are staying on Zoom for a little bit. So, you're welcome to land, because I have questions. I've been meeting with some of my friends at Heritage Key about the extent of these studies and whether it takes into consideration just phase one, or if we can look at additional phases, it's more of a cumulative study. But that's where we're at. So, we're going to be answering some of the questions. There was a petition that was circulated, and so, you know, when I've asked that, I haven't seen this yet, like, we can't just be silent on this at this point. We've gotten all this feedback from the community. We need to respond. Here is what we are doing. You know, some of it may not go as far as the folks at Sign Petition wanted. Some things may be exactly what they're asking for. I certainly hope so. And then, you're always welcome to continue to revive public feedback. I know it's really hard to see the loss of trees, especially if, and then Gig Harbor, because I mean, I remember when Gig Harbor North was all trains, right? And we were all, it's just like, one day, they were all gone, or a lot of them were gone. We still had some of these stands. But with the growth management, you guys have heard of that, every community has growth targets that we have to meet, and this was the area of town where we had the land and the topography fit to add the housing that we had to by law in every community, that plans under the growth management and a casted tape on some density in the city, so that we prevent sprawl into rural areas. And because we had so many new people in the Gig Harbor North area, and we had so many young families, that's when we started hearing more and more about the need for local fields for them to practice on. So, this was the response. One thing that I will say is that, I mentioned there's three phases. I would hope, I don't know if I should even say this, but I would really hope that once we get phase one and two done, we can take another look at whether we actually need phase three, so that we can maybe maintain the forest as trails or something like that for phase three. And then, just the other thing that I like to mention, just for perspective, is that phase one was the site of a commercial complex. So, that was supposed to be raised, and it was supposed to be, you know, more big box stores or medical facilities or something. So, the city purchased it and really thought a better use and a more palatable use for the community would be a park. So, it's an improvement, but not as far as some folks would like in terms of just leaving it natural. Do you have a follow-up?
Well, I was just going to say, I think one of the, of course, the environmental concern is huge, and the fact that the proposed plan would not develop the perfect forest are important, and the survey indicated that sports facilities were way down on the list of what the public wanted. The public really wanted walking trail and that type of thing. So, that environmental, the thought of picking out a place where there are 90 different species of birds is hurtful. But even more concerning is the traffic impact. Because right now, as we found out with the Harper closure, there were times that it took me from here to go to the freeway, 30 minutes to get to the freeway, and there's no emergency access for a larger emergency vehicle. Well, the proposed six-hour field would bring in who knows how many people on a weekend for a tournament. And they're talking about tournaments with many teams, because it's regional, where I think it should be community, not a whole other thing.
And that's something I'm asking, I'm asking as well. When I emailed them just the other day, I said, because I don't remember, when we talked about this at a Parks Commission level, I never remember hearing about, like, the term "regional," because we just heard there was so much need for local practice in our hunting fields. So, I would love, and I can't promise anything, but I'd love to get that term "regional" removed. And then, if we built out all six phases or all three phases, there would be six fields. But phase one is just two fields, and phase two, I assume, is two fields as well. And that's at the point where I would like to say, okay, let's pause. Traffic is a concern, and so, we're going to hear about that at this study session. But traffic report makes bad. I mean, I'm traveling just like you guys.
And I can see that the people in the Harbor Creek area are being really impacted by it, because of the traffic access, it was really not, it was just not, you know, parking right now. When there's a league game on Saturday, traffic is having to park in the neighborhood, because there's not enough.
Oh, yeah, I was just there, I was just there this weekend, dropping something off. Yeah, I saw people circling through the neighborhood, so it is.
So, I'm happy to hear that you think maybe that could be some reduction. It's, I think that it's, it could affect not only North State Harbor, but the whole harbor, because if you have traffic, it's going to impact downtown in the harbor as well as up here.
Yeah, so we're going to talk about ways that we can mitigate what we can, and.
And maybe using the school fields.
Yeah, a lot of people talk about that, and I've asked for some more information at the study session about schools, because we've talked to the schools. They are already using the schools. I know sometimes it's like, well, I don't see anybody using Swiftwater, so I asked about that. So, again, hopefully, we'll get some more information. But these, I mean, I remember my kids in the little plane, some when we were at Artdale or we were over behind Discovery, they really are using the schools already. We don't want to take down trees where we don't have to. And it's wonderful that the community and some members with me have mobilized around this, because once we do have phase one and two done, I think we'll have those voices to say, okay, let's take a pause and assess, do we really need more, or with the community, the kids included, you know, would they prefer to have forests in their neighborhood where they can walk around and play and enjoy? Thank you for that. Yes.
Related to that, I live on the Key Peninsula. We conserve their site housing as a bigger concern. But security, I require lots of parts. So, I hike or walk at 360 trail park. I use the park car on 144th. Numerous car breaks break in. This is true also Maple Hollow, which is more isolated. People won't even go to a 480, or just become a 480 park, because of numerous car breaks break in. Does this apply to all the parks in Gig Harbor area? Security issues? Number two is, what can we do about it?
I mean, so, we have the same issues here in the city with the Cushman Trail, and you would think that there's so much visibility and there's so much traffic. So, that parking lot right there next to Home Depot, you know, right on Morgan, breaks in all the time. And I had a friend that accessed the park over by the McCormick Creek neighborhood, and her window was broken on. And I mean, these are pretty visible, well-trafficked areas, and I know there's a lot of issues out on the Key Peninsula. So, with the Key Peninsula, that's your Key Peninsula Parks District. Yeah, yeah, and Tracy, the secretary, Drew is wonderful there, and they've got a volunteer coordinator, I forget his name, but they're trying to get, like, park hosts or park stewards to basically hang out in the parking lot and keep an eye on things. Over here in the city, we've got cameras. Of course, we can't cover everything, but up by the Home Depot one, we've got cameras, and we're just telling people to be safe and don't have their purses out. And you, personally, when I go to the Cushman Trail, I would likely park at the Home Depot and put a big white open, and then just walk over, because I don't have time to have a car, you know, broken into and windows smashed out. Here in Gig Harbor, since you touched a little bit on public safety, we have an excellent police department. We have 20 officers right now. We've been trying to get to 21, and it seems like we're almost there, and somebody retires or somebody moves on. So, I actually emailed the chief a couple weeks ago, like, maybe we should be shooting for 22 or 23, and then we'll land at 21. So, they are fantastic about responding. They respond to every single call. So, if you're in the city, you're in really good shape. We've got a decent number per capita, you know, of police officers. The county is a completely other story. So, our deputies, we're a rural detachment, so there's Peninsula, there is a mountain detachment, and there's the, oh, gosh, they have one Flat Hills or something, some other detachment. So, the county sheriff to Harvard is already really low on officers, so over 50, and they're expecting another 50 to just be lost, because other departments pay more, or people are just going to retire and out of the field. And when they do have officers, they really concentrate them in the areas of highest crime, which makes sense, which is their central district, so you're Stanaway and you're Frederickson and that area. So, that means that out here, at any time, we usually only have two deputies, and that's the entire Gig Harbor Peninsula, Fox Island, and the entire Key Peninsula. So, it's amazing that we see them at all. And it's not that they're not trying, but they are obviously happy to respond to violent crimes, you know, the highest priority crimes. So, if you have a property theft, or if you have vandalism, they may not even respond, or it's going to take them a lot of time. And I do want to encourage people to still report. There's a reporting online, and when you call the police, you call 911, they will direct you how to do that, because then we can show where we have crime or we have pockets of crime. So, hopefully, we can justify another deputy in the future. And I don't want to give them unrealistic expectations, because we're pretty far down on the list, because even though we've got a lot of crime out here, it's a lot worse in the other areas. And I hate to even say that, because it doesn't feel like that out here, but that's the case, and our deputies are not going to start to stay here. There's actually a meeting tonight on the Key Peninsula at 6:00. I'm not sure if it's at the Civic Center, probably, about crimes. There's, people are frustrated, and I think what we're trying to remind folks is that our deputies and our officers are happy to respond to those priority violent crimes, and that unfortunately, the property crimes are being delayed. And if we can really get a handle on the violent crimes, then hopefully, they can start responding more to the, not lesser crimes, but the property crimes, so they're not a matter of life and death. And we're really encouraging people, Key Peninsula has some great neighborhoods that are involved in this Safe Streets program, Neighborhood Watch, Safe Streets, really encouraging people to have eyes on their neighborhoods or their streets, putting the brain cameras up is good, because that helps our law enforcement too. And hopefully, we'll cause some folks to pause, you know, and think before they decide that we're easily preyed upon. Yes.
Often times, I'm hearing requests, we talk about controlling that. Is there any movement to get at the causes?
Yes, yes. So, the question was, we talk a lot about, you know, addressing, like, the crisis or controlling the violence and stopping the violence, and what about prevention? I met with the new Tacoma Police Chief, Chief Moore, a month ago, who I really like, I have a lot of hope for, they're experiencing a lot of crime in Tacoma, and he said that he thinks at its root is a lack of love in people's lives. Kids, teenagers, and then moving on up, if they don't have what they need in terms of that social, emotional connection, in terms of food, in terms of clothing, in terms of social interaction, you know, that experience with a trusted adult, usually a teacher or a coach or maybe a club leader, then that's where these law enforcement professionals are believed, and I do too. People start, they start losing hope. They start losing hope that they can have a successful life based on kind of the correct path. Maybe they don't feel like they can be successful in school or college or a business, so they're like, well, then I'm going to make my money over here this way by stealing something or getting involved with drugs, and of course, that just spirals. So, one of the things that I'm really passionate about, and our current county council has been passionate about, and Derek Young has been a real leader in this, is a lot of early childhood investment. So, he started a birth of five coalition. They started this thing called Help Me Grow, which provides families a lot of resources. So, if you call in and maybe, or identify a family that needs help, they'll go visit the family, they'll help them work through mental health issues, a lot of early intervention, they'll get them connected with programs like Communities with Schools or Children's Home Society or Food Backpacks for Kids, to help get these kids and their families, because, you know, the family has to have what they need too. The housing or the assistance they need, so that the kids feel safe and secure and have that sense of hope that they can also be on the right path and be successful in life. And so, we don't want to just focus on the crises. Homelessness is another example of that. And that's another thing I think that this current county council is doing right, is they're investing a ton of money in actual housing. So, the crisis, getting people off of the sidewalks and at least integrating the sanctioning permit area where there are services and sanitation and laws of case management, to then start moving them into a tiny home or one of the single-room occupancy dwellings, or maybe a lot of people may just see rent subsidies. We found that a lot of homeless people is. We found that a lot of homeless people, especially in their cars, we were talking about this earlier, but even in the tents, they actually have jobs, but they can't afford an apartment. So sometimes it's just a matter of getting them over that gap so that they can access an apartment, the first and last one's rent and maybe a couple months of subsidy. And then they're on their way, they're good. Now, there's a lot, there's a lot of cases that are harder cases too. Folks that have been out on the streets so long that they've developed, you know, severe mental illness. Some of that's from substance abuse over time. And we find that people get, you know, more heavily involved in substances use when they're on the streets. Because, for example, they get hooked on meth because they're trying to stay up all night to watch their stuff and it just spirals. So having people in a safe place where we can address those issues is important. That's kind of like the immediate crisis. But again, just like crime, we need to work on preventing homelessness and stemming that pipeline of new people coming in. So whether that's rent assistance or, or eviction prevention, helping folks with job training, so if they're not making enough to maintain their, their apartment, well, how about, you know, getting them into a welding program or a CNC program or, you know, a CNA program or something that will raise their income level so that they have, or they need to be stable because we know that's going to help them and it's going to help their whole family. So we're really starting to, to curb that cycle of poverty that is rampant. So we have to tack it on both ends and, and it's hard politically because what people want to see is the immediate quick fix. And we do have to fix what's going on right now, absolutely. But we need to also be working on the root causes. Because while we may not see the, see the results right now, that's what's important for our future. Yes?
First of all, I want to thank you for your service.
Oh, thanks.
Our democracy depends on people getting involved and giving of themselves, which it sounds like you really do. I really think that.
Thank you.
Um, can you say a little bit more about that Communities for Schools or something? What, what is that?
So Communities and Schools is a nonprofit organization that I've been involved in. Communities in Schools, yes. It's actually a national organization, but we have a local chapter here for the Peninsula School District. And if you're looking for a volunteer opportunity, it's just wonderful. I think we're in ten of the schools right now. And we've got these site coordinators that are in there working with kids that are at risk, right? Kids that, they may be low income or they may be experiencing other, maybe it's a social thing. Maybe it's a kid that is having trouble making friends on the playground. And if you're a parent, you know, nothing breaks your heart more than that. I've never compared how my kids did academically, I want them to be happy, right? So it's getting in there and figuring out what these kids need. Uh, but we also, and figure out what we can do to help the families. During COVID, I mean, there were some positive things that came out of COVID. When the schools shut down, we were going to these kids' houses. We'd never been to these kids' houses. We found out that in the entire house, for some of these kids, there was one mattress that they were sharing. Some kids were living with the grandmother in like some dilapidated trailer while the mother and the boyfriend and the new baby are high on meth in the other trailer. Some didn't have running water. I mean, we had, but the good thing is now we know. And so we're like, oh my gosh, we can connect them with these other services. We have compounds of families that were, I mean, doing their best, right? To, to survive and depend on each other, but some of them didn't speak English. And when we, we're able to really make that connection with them, they're like, hey, we can, we can get you all these different services and assistance and get people out there cleaning up these places. And so it's just wonderful. What we're looking for volunteers, not to overwhelm the people, is mentors. Just somebody who can go into the schools, talk with kids, to read with the kids, to do math with the kids. And math is your thing. Uh, but more important is that connection, that this person, this young person has somebody they can talk to. And you know, especially when they get into the middle school and high school ages. I know, they don't want to talk to their parents. It happens, I don't get it. But I even remember when I was a teenager, I went to my choir director, right? So sometimes you need that person that's just a little bit removed. That can be the voice of reason and wisdom. So if you're interested, you know, come see me because our volunteers, of course, with COVID, went down and now we're trying to build this back up, yes?
So what's happening with the, we, Communities and Schools got a barrel of money from McKinsey.
McKinsey Scott, yes.
And so, uh, is Key Harbor getting any of that funding? I mean, I think they are.
Yeah.
What's going to happen to that?
Yes, well, good question. Hopefully I don't overspeak because I think we still aren't working through our board officially. But let's see what I can say, so I don't want to over say. So the local, your local Communities and Schools of Philly and the one that I'm on the board of received eight hundred thousand dollars from McKinsey Scott. And she was very selective about who she chose because she wanted to see, you know, organizations that were fiercely responsible and that were making a big difference. So we were honored. We didn't apply for this, we had no idea it was even out there, it was, it was a big shot. So she wants impact, obviously, and then she wants sustainability, which we really appreciate. And if you've been involved in nonprofit organizations, you appreciate how important that is. So that represents about one year of our budget. Because your staff is obviously the biggest part of our budget. So what we're talking about now and we'll be deciding at the board meeting this, this week is do we go into one school or two schools, two additional schools to serve more kids? And I'm going for the two because we want to show, you know, that we can have more of an impact. And we know, I think, schools are discovering, Key Harbor High, we want that to continue. But when kids are going to elementary, middle and high school, they've got, they've got support, the families have support. But we also are thinking about, um, sustainability because this is a one-time gift and, you know, this will last us for a few years. But then we're going to figure out where the money comes from to keep the people employed, to keep, you know, the services to the kids going. So we're weighing all of those options, but it's been, it's been a wonderful way for us to be able to expand our services into other schools that we weren't expecting. And then another cool thing that happened, uh, because we got such good publicity and people were like, oh my gosh, organizations has so much legitimacy and, and can be trusted. KITAP School District came to us and wanted us to put one of our people, one of our site coordinators at KITAP High School. And you've probably heard, it's like one of the biggest high schools in the state.
Really?
Isn't it the biggest? It's enormous! And the principal as well as the superintendent both came from Peninsula School District. So they knew about us already and they said we will pay the whole thing. So, because we're like, well, we can't, we, we can't afford to put another site coordinator. They're paying the whole bill for the person. And we imagine that, that, you know, after a year or so, hopefully we can expand into more of those schools, the most needed schools for the kids in that area too. And we're really excited about that. There's a lot of work to be done and a lot of great organizations out there, out there doing it. We're very big into partnerships, whether it's the Red Bar or Food Backpacks for Kids or Fish Food Bank or Children's Home Society.
Mustard Sea Project.
The Mustard Sea Project is awesome. You guys are, you talk about housing, so important for people on the Key Peninsula. So when I've talked to people that are any older on the Key Peninsula, they're like, we can't handle this house anymore. We don't want this house anymore, it's just too much land pressure. But we don't want to leave the KPD, people in the Key Peninsula that it's really key for. And now the Mustard Sea is providing a place where they can stay close to their families. Because what we've found is when people had to go to Lakewood, even as far as Key Harbor, their neighbors aren't visiting as often, their families aren't visiting. Everybody has great intentions, but they're busy lives. And you know what happens when your social world shrinks? It's not, not good, not good health-wise or mental wise. And, and we want to take care of our wonderful people and, and keep them in their communities if, if they want to stay. Most of them do. Anything else? Some people ask, um, what the county does different from the city. I get that a lot, especially from city residents. So I just wanted to mention a few of the things, we've talked about some of them. So unfortunately, criminal justice is the biggest part of the county budget. So while you have, you know, we've got our Sheriff Department, but we also have all the jails, right? So Key Harbor and all the other cities utilize our jails. Um, we have the prosecutor's office and the public defender's office. And one of the things that this current county council is doing really well is developing new innovative, um, paths for people to go through the judicial system. Because if some people, if they're experiencing some mental health issues, just throwing them in jail or hooking them and charging them and then putting them back on the streets isn't helping. They're just going to reciprocate again through the system. So they created just recently a mental health court, which is great. There is a drug court, there's a family court. Because we don't want kids to be separated from their parents. That's like the last resort. So we want a place where they can really work through those issues. And then drug court, of course, it's much better, we get people into, into treatment. Um, we have the Health Department, which is pretty important the last couple of years. Um, affordable housing is something that we're working really hard on. And they mentioned the environment, they've got a Sustainability 2030 Plan. So they're really working hard on the environment. And this, these are some of the things that we want to make sure move forward. Um, the current council has had the majority for the last two years. They've got a lot of great things in place and they're just starting to implement these things. So we want to make sure that we're moving forward. Did you have a question on the side of your hand, Bo? No, no, okay.
I do have a question. I think it's on the county jurisdiction. Uh, I usually receive jury notices about two a year.
Oh, really? You're popular.
Anyway, I turn them down and I usually, uh, that's acceptable. The issue, and that's what I hope, is living here in the Key Peninsula, especially on the first day of the week on Monday. The drive early in the morning, the winter in the dark, in the rain, in commuter traffic, the situation there at the courthouse, the party is impossible.
And, yeah.
And then you, then you, you finally are allowed to go into the jury. It's packed in there. It's hot, no ventilation, no seats. Uh, is there any way to improve that whole system? Not only that, uh, I'd be glad to serve on, on a jury, but not in the governor. Uh, I think Key Harbor has a whole court system.
We do.
That holds, to me, for a person who's retired in the seventies, that system is just too difficult.
Yeah, I don't have a solution for you, but that, that's something to consider. Because one of the things that I would like to do is see more services out throughout the side of the bridge. For that reason, especially in the Key Peninsula where it's difficult for folks to drive. I mean, if you need to get a permit or something, you have to all the way to Tacoma. It would be nice if at least once a month, our planning and permitting people could come out here for a day and be there at Key Center. Uh, and the Health Department is already coming out, but they were just doing like septic and biological health issues. It would be nice to have somebody from the Health and Human Service Agency to help, help people with rent assistance forms and, and things like that and access other services. Um, so the judicial is something to look into and I don't, I don't see why that would be impossible. We do have court in Key Harbor, but I don't think it's a jury court. Uh, maybe that's something that we can add because I think that that's.
At least, yeah.
Or a bus.
Yeah, something, you know.
Yeah, or help with transportation, yes. And to send somebody up to, to fetch you, yeah. Does anything want to talk about safe parking? Because I know that's something that you all are interested in here.
Yes.
So, and I'm not the expert on this, but, um, right now, from what I understand, churches are allowed to have safe parking. The current county council tried to get that expanded to other entities, businesses or community groups. Um, and the executive struck it down, he vetoed. And to override a veto, you have to have five votes. And the county council only had their regular majority of four votes. So on Tuesday, it's going to come back before the county council, um, the four, the Democrats are going to try again. It's going to be a watered-down version of it, but they're hoping that something they can get through. From what I understand, it's going to be more of a limited, like, pilot programs. And churches, again, are fine to have their own programs. But I think they're going to see if they can get up to four other entities out in the county. And to me, this is low-hanging fruit in terms of things that we can do to address the homelessness issue. We know that most people that are homeless in their cars, um, gosh, there's so much to this. They typically have tried the shelters and found dangerous, not willing to go in and see that they don't, they don't want to be there. A lot of times because they have a car, they're still employed, but they just can't access affordable housing. When I was interviewing with the Tacoma firefighters two weeks ago, they were telling me that they, this woman showed up and abandoned their parking lot. And they went out and talked to her. She had just gotten a job at Amazon, you know, in the warehouse, but she didn't have the money saved up for an apartment. And these guys were like, you know what? You're good, you stay here. I'm not sure if it's some legal, but, you know, they, they helped her, they would bring food out. You know, just make sure to keep an eye out for them. So they're like, one day she was gone. And then a couple of weeks later, she showed back up and let them know that she'd been able to find housing. When Denny and I went out to Puyallup, we heard about, they had great results with people moving into housing. And a lot of these folks, I think they said eighty percent, had jobs. They were going to Home Depot or they were going to Walmart. But they needed a place that was safe to park at night, have their stuff in their car, I mean, kind of have some control over their lives still. And there were showers and there was, you know, laundry that would come through and, and the case management was there. I found it really interesting because you hear a lot of people say, oh, these people don't want help. You know, they're, they're, first of all, that, that's not true. There's a lot of folks that are ready to take help. Even if you hear the statistics, which kills me, that only half accept any service. I'm like, well, A, that's a lot of people, that's a lot of people off the streets, so this is a good thing. And then the other half, like Denny and I, from the service provider, was that, yes, they get people that are like, no, I don't want to fill out a form, I don't want, I don't want your help, I just want a place to park. Well, they have to fill out a form, there are, there are some things that, that they require. But they really ease people into this. So then this one gentleman, for example, we're talking about, felt safe and, you know, kind of calmed down. He had a place where he could park and no one was going to come and hassle him or move him along. And then like after a couple of weeks, he started getting to know people, little by little. You know, didn't want to at first, but started to get to know the case managers there. And we started accepting services, started accepting meals, started talking about, you know, what else he could apply for and how they can help him. So some people, you know, are at the point where they're just so beaten down, where they've had so much trauma, that, yeah, they, they're pretty closed off to services. But if you can get them in a place where they can stabilize and feel safe, then most, I think, are, you know, we, we've seen, are, they start opening up services. And they start seeing the possibilities, they start seeing a little bit of hope. Yes, I could get into housing, yes, I could get employed again if I'm not. I could reconnect maybe with siblings or family and start building that support network again. So hopefully on Tuesday, this, this passes through again. Um, thank you guys for, for doing what you're doing. And we always like to say, you know, every entity that provides safe parking can come up with its own rules. You can say that they have to be going by seven AM and they can't come back till five or there's only a certain number or you can come up with your own rules about who you serve and how you serve them. But when I heard about the veto, which is so frustrating, because when I'm knocking on doors in Tacoma, for example, people are so upset about somebody parking in front of their house. They're so upset about somebody parking at the park or down by the river where, obviously, they're just going to the bathroom because there's no bathrooms, so it's really like horrible all around, right? They're really upset about that. So now we have a situation where a, a good group of people want to, wants to organize something, the sanitation, for these folks to have a place to go, why would we say no to that? If we do, the cars are going to be in front of these houses again and that's, that's not good for anybody, so. We'll, we'll see, yes?
Kind of, kind of related to this with that, is there is a, a horrible shortage of psychiatric beds in Pierce County, particularly for young kids, children and young adults. Is there anything that, uh, works to address that issue?
Yeah, so Pierce County was the only county in the entire state of Washington that did not have a behavioral health tax. Up until last year, when this county council passed the behavioral health tax, it's like one-tenth of one percent. So it's like a penny out of there, like ten dollars or something. And again, every other county had it. So we are way behind the curve. And Pierce County has terrible mental health and substance use statistics because of that. But at least they got it passed, they just released the first grant. I think they had about ten million dollars and it adds up really quickly. Um, and there's, they're going to provide more beds, more facilities, more services. Now, there is a problem, and it's a problem that a lot of industries are, are facing, there's not enough people. So even if we've got the money, it's a challenge to find providers. Um, and the county will say that around homelessness too, we've got the money, we need places like this. We need, we need partners to, to support, to do the actual services. So I would also like to really explore, how are we building our pipeline of mental health and behavioral health professionals? Talking to high schoolers, talking to college students about this is a career that, you know, can help a lot of people and that is very marketable. So it's going to take a little time for us to, to get out there, but we've got more resources, yes, thank you.
Yeah, what do you know about the status of the old state hospitals down in, uh, like what we're? You know, I've dealt with that for years. I'm curious to know where that stands now in the facilities that are available.
Yeah, you know, and you probably know more about it, I, I hear a lot about it. Um, I actually don't know what the future is for them. But a lot of people blame that for the problem because they just let people out and then there was nothing, nowhere for them to go.
Not just the problem, it's just that there was, uh, uh, there was an extent. Not just the problem, it's just that there was, there was an extent where there's availability of buildings there for housing for homeless. And of course, we tried to do it for the best several years ago and totally got shot down all across the board. And I, but it's been, damn near is Bruce's, you know, he, he looked at it when he first came on and everything. I don't know where he stands for any of this now. You guys, if it's ever talked about at council, you know.
I'll ask about that.
Talk about, you know, at some point. I mean, you're not there yet. Hope you're gonna be there.
But I'm, but I'm still talking to them because they, they won't be there. So I will, I will ask for, just any time we've got a facility that we can use for homeless and as a place to triage people and get people into better housing. We can be looking at that.
Based on my experience, I used to be a librarian at the state hospital.
Oh, wow.
Apparently, you know, I hear you secondhand. It's becoming more and more of a forensic hospital. Much of the hospital is now under at least medium security. When I worked there in the eighties, nineties, there was no fence, no gates, was open gaps. That's not the case anymore. So the hospital has undergone a lot of changes.
Okay. And, you know, there may be a need for that as well, but we don't want to criminalize homelessness. So we want to make sure that the people feeling they're in a place where they belong. But we're looking, we're looking for places. I mean, it's very frustrating that this, and not to blame the city of Tacoma. I'm sure this is not easy, but we need sanctioning hamlets. We need places for people to stabilize. So then we can start working them, working them into real housing situations. And it doesn't seem like that hard. When a forest fire comes through, it must got a city built overnight. So it just seems like we should be able to do this, but we'll work on it. Anything else? Well, thank you for your time. I'm always available for questions about the city or, or county, obviously. And you'll be seeing my signs up and if anybody would like a sign, I would love to put one in your yard or if you wanted the information or just tell your friends and neighbors and they can feel free to reach out to me anytime. I am really passionate about serving the public. This is, this is what I want to do with my life and I'm excited to, I'm excited that my kids can, can do themselves a little bit of what I can do. And they're really helpful because they're, they're really excited about it. Pretty helpful. Thank you.
Exciting and vibrant and if you're candidate, you know, we certainly, I know Ann and I have certainly supported you and hoping that we're going to have more in the community. So thanks again for your time right this morning. Appreciate it.